Good morning, everyone. This is the Wednesday, December 6, 2023. Regular meeting of the NAGS Headboard of Commissioners is hereby called to order. If you will, please join me in a few moments of silence. And now, as you're able, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we continue, I'd like to welcome a few folks who are here with us this morning. Former Mayor Bob Moller is here. Former Commissioner Susie Walters, I believe I saw here as well, and Commissioner-elect Meghan Lambert, who's temporarily part of the audience but will join us shortly. The first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
So moved.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That brings us to recognitions, and I will first call on Public Services Director Nancy Caron.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce Taylor Midget. He's with Facilities Maintenance. I'll need these. Taylor was raised in Charlotte, but his family is from here. He enjoys fishing and golfing in his spare time. He brings years of experience in landscaping to Facilities Maintenance, and he lives in Manio with his wife Celine, who's from Turkey, and he says he is grateful for the opportunity to join the NAGS Head team. Taylor.
Nancy will stay with us for a recognition.
Good morning. This is Alan Beatty. He's been with the water distribution for five years. He has become a great asset to the town. He has obtained his B Distribution License, his CDL, and his Flagler Certification. He is now working towards his backflow cross-connection and his A Distribution. He has learned a lot of things that go along with making water flow to our customers. He works well with everyone he comes across. He is very helpful with customers who call in with water problems concerning their meters, especially his meters. He's our meter man. His knowledge of our system has been very helpful when helping find the meters, which we all know gets covered with sand and brush, or shutting off valves for water main breaks. He does an excellent job in training new employees, the ins and outs of the water system. We hope he sticks around for many more years, and we're grateful to have him. Alan Beatty.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. It is my distinct honor to introduce Lieutenant Trevor Tilly, a dedicated member of our NAGS Head Fire Department. Trevor began his career in the town on November 19, 2018. Lieutenant Tilly has demonstrated unwavering dedication and has served with distinction for five years, embodying the core values of our department: courage, commitment, and compassion. In his role, Lieutenant Tilly has consistently displayed courage in the face of adversity, whether responding to emergencies or leading his team through challenging situations. His commitment to our community's safety has been unwavering. Evident in his tireless hours, he's dedicated to his responsibility. Moreover, Lieutenant Tilly has shown compassion, understanding the human element in every situation, and approaching his duties with empathy. In addition to his outstanding service within the NAGS Head Fire Department, Lieutenant Trevor Tilly is not only a dedicated professional but a devoted family man. For his past two years, he's been happily married with his wife Sasha, and together they've shared the joys of parenthood with their son Tucker. Beyond his immediate family, Lieutenant Tilly's commitment to firefighting runs deep in his blood. He proudly carries on the tradition as a fifth-generation firefighter, a legacy that speaks volumes about his passion and connection to our noble profession. Notably, he's the son of Fire Chief Troy Tilly of Kill Devil Hills, further highlighting his strong, familiar ties to firefighting that Lieutenant Tilly continues to uphold today. It's a great pleasure and honor I present to you for recognition, Lieutenant Trevor Tilly.
I hope Mr. Beatty and Mr. Tilly will stick around and watch this next part and think about staying around as long as this next person has. The next item on our agenda is the retirement of Town Clerk, Deputy Clerk Michelle Gray. Carolyn.
I would like to recognize Michelle Gray as she will soon begin her much-deserved retirement from the town after over 27 years. It's difficult to summarize a career that started on October 1, 1996. In a few minutes, but I would like to point out a few things. She has been the steady force behind the scenes in the town manager's office, and she has always been the go-to person for anything that needed to be done. Over the years, she has created procedures for crowd gatherings, wedding website page, and park reservations. She responded to calls and emails during the initial Beach Nursery Project in 2011, coordinated the town's Festival of Thanksgiving, its 50th anniversary, and the first sound site event site carnival, processed taxicab, massage therapists, and board committee applications, acted as town clerk when I was out of the office, responded to a wide variety of phone calls and emails from the public, received an Employee of the Year Award, worked with six different town managers and 20 different board members. And she's done all this and much more in a polite, friendly, and very professional manner. Michelle has been a joy to work with and will be greatly missed, especially by her West Wing coworkers. Michelle, your many contributions will not be forgotten. Enjoy your time in retirement.
We have a small plaque for Michelle, which is upon her retirement. Just a few words: thanks for your many years of dedicated service. Thank you very much. I'll ask Board members if they would like to say anything upon Michelle's retirement. I know, Michelle, you've shared with us a little bit your plans and your excitement about what you're going to be able to do with your free time, and we wish you Godspeed because you're excited about that. But we are going to miss your smiling face when we come into the office suite up there. I can't imagine how much institutional knowledge is getting ready to leave the building, but hopefully you've passed some of that on, and we will be able to call on you from time to time in emergencies. Commissioner Sears.
I was going to save the embarrassment to have her speak until the end of the meeting. I would love to hear your recap of your best and worst experiences.
That's for another day.
Okay. All right. It's been a pleasure. It's been a pleasure.
Congratulations, I think, six different town managers, 20 different board members you've seen a lot. And we appreciate you for your dedication and service, and you will certainly be missed.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, we are going to miss you. But we are very happy for you, and we do appreciate all that you have done, and wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to reorganization of the Board, having had an election in November. And we'll call on Town Clerk Carolyn Morris.
I recently received the results of the November 7 election. They are as follows: Meghan Lambert received 705 votes, Kevin Brinkley received 585, Team Mike Morrison received 241, and Keith Sawyer received 111 votes. And I'll be ready to give the oath of office to Meghan, if you're ready.
That I will support and maintain. That I will support and maintain. The Constitution and laws of the United States. The Constitution and laws of the United States. And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina. And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina. Not inconsistent therewith. Not inconsistent therewith. That I will faithfully and impartially. And that I will faithfully and impartially. Discharge the duties imposed upon me. Discharge the duties imposed upon me. As Commissioner of the Town of Nagshead. As Commissioner of the Town of Nagshead. According to laws so help me God. According to laws so help me God. Congratulations. Kevin.
I, Kevin Brinkley, solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Opposed upon me as Commissioner.
Opposed upon me as Commissioner.
Of the Town of Nagshead.
Of the Town of Nagshead.
According to laws so help me God.
According to laws so help me God.
Congratulations.
Commissioner Brinkley, welcome back to the Board. Commissioner Lambert, welcome to the Board. Before we take a short break, Commissioner Brinkley, you related how many times you've been sworn in by the town clerk this morning.
I was thinking, Ms. Carolyn, last night I was thinking, 33 years ago this week or this month, Connie Partey swore me in as a police officer, and then Ms. Carolyn has sworn me in as a police sergeant, police lieutenant, police chief, commissioner.
Commissioner.
Quite an honor, so thank you.
Thank you very much. The Board will be in a brief recess. The next item on our agenda is the selection of a mayor pro temp, and a motion would be in order.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Mike Sears is mayor pro temp.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to elect Commissioner Sears as mayor pro temp. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Commissioner Sears.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it. I state your name, you solemnly swear.
I, Michael Sears, do solemnly swear.
That I am duly elected mayor pro temp.
That I am duly elected.
Of the board of commissioners of the Town of Nagshead. At an official meeting on November 6, 2023.
At an official meeting on November 6, 2023.
I will support and maintain.
I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
The Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Opposed upon me as mayor pro temp.
Opposed upon me as mayor pro temp.
Of the Town of Nagshead.
Of the Town of Nagshead.
According to laws so help me God.
According to laws so help me God. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is public comment, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the Board welcomes members of the public to provide comment to the Board. This is not an opportunity for dialogue, and the Board rarely responds to public comment. But anyone who wishes to provide comment on any matter of concern or interest should start by approaching the podium, starting by telling us who you are and where you live, and then addressing your remarks to the full Board. Please note that we do have three public hearings on the agenda today, and if you're here to comment for one of those public hearings, you should reserve your comments until the actual public hearing itself. But for anyone else who wishes to provide public comment at this time, this is your opportunity. Anybody? Mr. Mayor, I see no one here for public comment, so we can close the public comment session.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. The next item on our agenda is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a change to the consent agenda by removing item four from the consent agenda.
Okay. Thank you. I believe, do we first vote on removing the item?
Yes, sir.
All right. Then a motion, we'll take that as a motion. Is there a second?
There's a motion and a second to remove item four.
Any discussion? Oh, never mind. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. Now, having removed it, a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you. Does anybody want to speak to the removal of that item?
I can, real quick, Mayor. We talked about this with the Board yesterday individually, and something we've gone back and looked at, we've decided to not re-enter a lease agreement for our computer equipment. So we may bring back a budget amendment at some point in order to purchase the equipment, but we decided not to pursue the lease agreement.
Very good. Thank you. That brings us to our public hearings, and I'll turn it back to Mr. Leidy.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. At this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider a subdivision waiver that's been submitted by Quibel and Associates on behalf of Ronald and Sabrina Makita for one proposed two-lot minor subdivision of parcel 007323000, pin number 071811556240. We'll begin with this public hearing by the presentation of the staff's analysis presented by the Planning Director, Kelly Wyatt.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I struggle with huddle-hub sometimes anyway, but I'm doing live left-handed for the time being, so I apologize if it's a little slower than usual. But as the attorney noted, I am before you this morning to present a subdivision waiver request on behalf of Ronald and Sabrina Makita. They own a 3.66-acre property on the west side of South Old Oregon Inlet Road. It is Zoned R2. I'm going to scroll down real quick into the staff report just to kind of give an idea of the location of the property. It's an aerial photograph that we have. So just to briefly mention, Section 8.4 of the UDO specifies what a minor subdivision is, and what the Makitas are seeking to do would be considered a minor subdivision. They want to take this 3.66-acre parcel and divide it into two parcels. The proposed Lot 1 would be 1.55 acres in area. There's currently a building being constructed on that lot. The proposed Lot 2 would be 2.11 acres in area. And there's a proposed preliminary plat in your packet, which I can pull up. But when you look at that, you'll note that the proposal does meet all the dimensional requirements of the R2 zoning district in terms of lot area. It's capable of meeting setbacks, lot width, et cetera. So for the most part, it is consistent with the creation of two new lots. Just to bounce back, Section 4.1, Table 4.1, tells us how we should be reviewing this type of subdivision request. Tells us that a minor subdivision should go through the Technical Review Committee, and then if everything is deemed proper there, the UDO Administrator can go ahead and approve the final plat. However, if there's any portion of the code that can't be met, that a waiver would have to be issued for, then it takes it through a different process. It essentially elevates it to a quasi-judicial process where has to come before the Planning Board and the Board of Commissioners for consideration of a subdivision waiver. So Article 10 of the Town Code, it contains a section, Section 10.47, that speaks to limiting access along certain roads, and specifically State Road 1243, which is South Old Oregon Inlet Road. It says, "Access to State Road 1243 from any lot in a new residential subdivision of land or any recombination of existing residential lots is prohibited unless and except a variance or waiver is granted pursuant to this UDO. Access to any of the major streets shall be provided by another existing improved public street, accepted for maintenance by the town, or a local access street collector or environmental street in a subdivision or access easement shown on a subdivision plat approved by the Board of Commissioners, provided, however, that maintenance and replacement of access ways is approved by the town attorney." So to go ahead and develop Lot 2, it would require that they install a separate driveway onto South Old Oregon Inlet Road, which that's the reason that we're here today requesting this waiver. The justification for the waiver is that the majority of this lot, this 3.66-acre lot, is considered to be wetlands. There's two primary pockets of uplands. The first pocket of upland, that's where the existing construction is occurring. There's another pocket of uplands, which is where, if this subdivision waiver is granted, they would like to pursue getting permits for a second home on that property. In order to have the most minimal effect on disrupting those wetlands, it would actually be easier for them to install a standalone second driveway, as opposed to trying to come in with a shared driveway. In your packet, I've outlined the procedures for granting waivers, and I have included some notes about the procedural requirements and considerations for preliminary plats, going through the preliminary sketch phase, what should be shown on your preliminary plat as well. So at this time, I'm just going to scroll down quickly, hopefully, to the proposed preliminary plat, so that we can all get a better idea of the request. So this is the proposal on the screen. This would be the proposed Lot 1. You have 26,000, over 26,000 square feet of uplands on the proposed Lot 1, so that would still meet all the requirements of the R2 zoning designation. And then Lot 2 would be this L-shaped lot here. You have just a little bit over 25,000 square feet of uplands on the proposed Lot 2. So that meets the requirements as well for the R2 zoning district standards. You can see the uplands here. Again, there's an existing home being constructed there. You can see some uplands here, which, if approved, it's my understanding, the applicants would like to develop a home there as well. Scrolling through the packet, there's additional information from Army Corps of Engineers on their evaluation and issuance of fill permits. The last thing that I wanted to show the Board and the audience is this wastewater feasibility sketch. So this is not relevant to the subdivision request necessarily, or the waiver, but it does give you a visualization of what would occur should the subdivision waiver be granted, and they can move forward. As you can see, this is the reason for the waiver request here. They're going to need a driveway cut onto South Old Oregon Inlet Road to come back here to develop this home. It's notable that septic would need to be pumped over to this other pocket of uplands on the north side of the property, but included in your packet is communication from Dare County Health Department that this would be suitable. And again, should they move forward and be able to actually develop this structure, Dare County Health Department would obviously be required. And here's your evaluation from the Dare County Health Department included. So those were the things visually that I wanted to show before moving into the staff recommendation. In review of this, staff does find that the proposal, it is consistent with the section of the code related to the granting of subdivision waivers. We also believe it's consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan to maintain and protect natural areas to the greatest extent possible. And should Lot 2 be developed, we still believe that it meets the intent of the low-density single-family development that's mentioned in the comp plan. With that, we're of the opinion that the preliminary plat applies with the requirements. Should the application proceed forward, we would like that there be two conditions placed on there, that there be additional grade elevation data required when and if they move forward with house plans, as well as to make sure that when they go through their stormwater management process, that there's no direct discharge of runoff from impervious areas to the 404 wetlands. The Planning Board heard this at their October 17 meeting, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of the subdivision waiver with the same two conditions that I just noted. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. And we do have Brian Rubino from Quibel available in the audience, and he's processed this application for the Makitas.
Does the Board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt? Anything? All right. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Any presentation from the applicant?
Sure. Thank you. Thank you. I'm Brian Rubino with Quibel and Associates. I think Kelly did a real good job of summarizing exactly what we've done so far and what we're trying to accomplish. Just want to be available to answer any questions for the project. The Makitas, just for your information on the new Lot 2... we're trying to accomplish. Uh, just want to be available to answer any questions, uh, for the project. The Makitas, just for your information on the new Lot Two, um, they've communicated to me that that's, that's going to be their, uh, their permanent residence. They live out of town. They, they ultimately want to retire and, uh, move here. So they want to do a two to three-bedroom house on Lot Two. And then Lot One, where they're building a home now, um, they want to have the ability to either sell that at some point in time, or just use that as a rental. They have a couple of rental homes in town, so just wanted to, um, give that a little bit of, uh, additional information and, uh, available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Rubino? All right. Anything further, Mr. Rubino?
No, thanks.
All right, thank you. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this proposed subdivision waiver request? Does the board wish to receive any other information regarding this matter before you begin your deliberations? All right, if not, we will conclude the public hearing at this time, and the board may begin its deliberations on this proposed request.
Um, for the purpose of discussion, um, I would ask if anybody would like to, is ready to offer a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve as presented, including the two, uh, conditions recommended by staff, as outlined in the memo.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seems like a reasonable solution to kind of a unique challenge.
Pretty well put together.
You know, a case of where rigorous application of the ordinance would not be really beneficial. Uh, having a motion and a second in hearing, no further discussion, then all of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed? Thank you. Uh, Mr. Leidy, you continue. Item two.
All right. At this time, we will begin the second public hearing, and this one is to consider text amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, as it pertains to the use of restaurant drive-through as a permissible use within the commercial mixed-use developments, as well as amending the supplemental regulations associated with this use. And again, on this matter, we will begin the public hearing with the presentation of the staff's analysis by the Planning and Development Director, Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. Um, as noted, uh, this is a text amendment request to the UDO as it relates to drive-through restaurants. Uh, the request is being made by Outlet Snacks Head to include the use of restaurant drive-through as a permissible use within commercial mixed-use developments, and to amend the supplemental regulations that are associated with drive-through restaurants. Section 7.32 of the UDO specifies the uses that are allowed to be within a commercial mixed-use development, um, and those types of developments include accessory residential group development, mixed-use development, uh, multiple principal uses, group development, and shopping centers. Um, presently, restaurant drive-through, um, the definition for that is going to be an establishment where, uh, drive lane facilities are provided for serving prepared food, frozen desserts, beverages directly to customer, in a motor vehicle by means which eliminates the need for the customer to exit the vehicle. Um, currently, restaurant drive-through is not listed as a use that is permitted within commercial mixed-use developments, so that means that a, um, we currently, we could not issue a permit for a drive-through within a shopping center, so, um, as we move through this, and as you, as you've probably heard me say, the applicant for this is Outlet Snacks Head, and they are considered a shopping center. Um, so that's, that's why we're here today. Um, section 7.29 of the UDO is where we talk about the supplemental regulations that are affiliated, um, with mixed-use developments. And so when we look at the proposed language, there's been some revisions requested there as well. Um, as we scroll down, so here you can see those proposed supplemental regulations, well, the existing regulations and how they're proposed to be amended. So, um, the first regulation speaks to buffering, and that's proposed to be unchanged. The second supplemental regulation speaks to when a drive-through is situated in a retail shopping center, um, which consists of at least 20 acres of land that has frontage on US 158, has a signalized access to and from US 158, um, and the structure with the drive-through is less than 3,000 square feet. Um, the Town Board of Commissioners may, in its discretion, approve alternative site layout with the front of the drive-through restaurant located in the C2 commercial district, um, on US 158 oriented differently, uh, meaning that the front facade would not necessarily face 158, um, and to do that as part of a special use permit. And to state that where the front facade of the restaurant with the drive-through is not oriented toward US 158, um, that the Town Board may approve that alternative, provided that all the buffer yard requirements have been met as well. Um, as noted, text amendments are not site-specific, um, but this, uh, request is in essence in an effort, uh, to be able to have a Starbucks drive-through restaurant located, um, within Outlet Snacks Head. Um, the applicant is aware that the site plan for this, the special use site plan, cannot move forward without first having this text amendment adopted, as it's been proposed. Um, I've listed, uh, in your packet, some policy considerations from our comprehensive land use plan, um, talking about, uh, each of the character areas and their unique characteristics, and how we see those evolving, and, uh, you know, with our regulations sort of intentionally guiding the future development of these areas. Um, within each character area, the plan also references a list of appropriate uses within these character areas, and, um, you'll note that, um, specifically Outlet Snacks Head is going to be located, uh, within the Wellbone Core character area, as well as within the US 158 character area. Um, when you look at this, you'll note that, um, in our Wellbone Core, we did say that a restaurant would be an appropriate use. We also stated that, uh, walk-up restaurant, a sit-down restaurant specifically stated that no drive-through, um, would be considered as appropriate within the Wellbone Core. Additionally, the same along the US 158 corridor, um, the same language exists there in terms of, um, not having a drive-through within those areas. Um, I won't go through each land use policy that's been cited. Um, I'm happy to, of course, answer any questions that you may have, but it, from staff perspective, it does seem that the town generally does, um, have concerns with drive-through restaurants, um, including their appropriateness within these character areas. Drive-through restaurants are currently only permitted via the special use permit process in the C2 zoning district and as a standalone principal structure. Right now, there's no allowance to have them, um, included as part of a mixed-use development, so, um, staff would submit that there's numerous concerns likely, uh, when you're proposing a new drive-through as part of an existing mixed-use development. Those, and, those concerns include, but aren't limited to, internal traffic circulation, um, issues, traffic congestion, um, potential reduction of necessary parking spaces, uh, vehicular backups, drive-al conflicts, pedestrian safety, uh, and other public safety concerns, such as the obstruction of emergency vehicle and fire lane access. Again, these are things that a lot of that would be noted, should you receive a site plan for a drive-through. Based on the analysis above, staff does recommend denial of the proposed text amendment to allow drive-through restaurants as an accept, as an acceptable use within mixed-use developments. The planning board heard this at their October 17th meeting, um, and voted unanimously to recommend denial of the text amendment as it was proposed as well. We do have the draft ordinance included in ordinance form for your consideration, um, specifically section 7.32.3, as you'll see on the screen. We've added drive-through restaurant as a use that would be permitted within mixed-use developments. Should the board be inclined to adopt this text amendment? I will note that Attorney Kraus Gray is in the audience today, and he is representing the outlets on this application. Do you have any questions?
All right, does the board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt?
Um, I'll ask a, a couple, if I may. So, I understand that we are proposing an amendment to the ordinance, um, but as the ordinance is written today, and as the area is zoned, the area around the shops is C2. The, the highway, um, between the highways there is still C2. That was not rezoned. So, if the applicant were seeking to put a drive-through restaurant on a green lot across 158, or on the racetrack adjacent to the shopping center, they wouldn't need this text amendment, they would just need a site plan.
That's correct.
The other question is, as I'm looking at the list, um, of permitted uses, we don't currently permit a drive-through restaurant in shopping centers, but the same applicants could put a indoor fitness gym in the parking lot. Under the current ordinance?
Correct, so...
As a use?
Yes, all of the uses that are up there are currently permitted in mixed-use developments.
Including microbreweries and all the other forms of restaurant. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Uh, no other questions for you?
Anything further, Kelly?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you, ma'am.
I got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Fine. Kelly, Wellbone Core, does that include, uh, the location there, just, uh, south of Salmonomi's in that intersection, where there is currently, drive-through restaurants?
Correct, so that's, um, I believe you're talking about the Taco Bell KFC, is that correct? Yes, so that is on C2, um, but it's not part, it's not part of an existing shopping center, so that was, that was obviously permitted.
So, if they wanted to, since we're not trying to be site-specific, but continue to be site-specific, if they moved across the street to this shopping center, would that be an allowable use? Under this, it wouldn't be, but if we made this, um, shopping centers or mixed use to have drive-through restaurants, then that would be a site that could have a drive-through?
Um, are you talking about the outlets?
No, I'm talking about Outer Banks Mall.
Oh, Outer Banks Mall, yes. Outer Banks Mall is considered a mixed-use development as well.
All right, and at one time, they had a Hardee's with a drive-through, but yet, at the same time, our new UDO changed that, so that removed it after that point, correct?
Yes, I mean, and to be honest, similarly with Dunkin' Donuts, um, that's a, that's an existing mixed-use development that has a drive-through.
That has a drive-through. So, if we don't go site-specific and say, in a shopping center, where parking would not be restricted, or change the conformity of that existing shopping center and allowed it, what would be the guidelines to receive or to be able to make that applicate, um, application in the future? Would there be another process after the fact?
Um, yeah, so, the way this has been proposed is via special use permit, so if this text amendment is adopted, you're always, this board will always see the actual site plan for the approval process of any drive-through located within a shopping center.
In the 20 acres, which, what would be affected?
To my knowledge, Outlet Snacks Head is the only existing shopping center that has 20 acres.
So none of the other ones qualify? Even with current out parcels that are already on the property?
Um...
Again, reference...
I don't know that right off the bat. I can, I can go run some numbers.
Underlying out parcel in the Outer Banks Mall, um, Starbucks could move there in that location. It's already set up for a restaurant, but just can't have it, so you're restricting it to 20 acres, even though we had a, a drive-through there previously, we can't have another drive-through there?
The way the UDO is currently written, we could not.
Okay.
But this text amendment would essentially, um, amend how that's viewed. This text amendment would now allow drive-through restaurants within, um, existing mixed-use developments, however, if there was a interest in allowing them on properties with less than 20 acres, we would also need to consider revising the supplemental, the, the proposal to the supplemental recs.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Wyatt? Anything further, Kelly?
No, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Well, at this time, would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Give my mic.
Yes, sir.
As indicated, my name is Kraus Gray. I'm the attorney for the applicant in this matter, and, yes, the property involved is the outlet there in Nags Head. And from my perspective, this is a use issue, not a design issue. Design issue, if in fact you approve this, we have to come back to you, but this is what can be done in this particular property. And, yes, we've disclosed all along, being transparent, that this is, we want to put a Starbucks in there, and Starbucks wants a drive-through, just that simple. We're in a C2 district. C2 does in fact allow drive-throughs, but there are further limitations, as Kelly indicated to you over here now, um, which prevent it from occurring on this particular piece of property. And so, a proposal was submitted to amend your ordinance to now allow the drive-through. We did put limitations in our proposed language. It was suggested, as I understand it, uh, by staff that limitations be put in. They didn't tell us what limitations, I'm not implying that at all, but that every time we have a situation to where we are recommending to boards that there be some change to an ordinance, there's always a concern that, oh, this opens the door to this throughout this particular zone. And so, we did not want the town to be subjected to a broad, this can be done anywhere within a C2 zone. So we limited it down to the 20 acres, and to, there has to be a septic system, and that is one of the key components to this, from my perspective. I don't want to get into the development issues, the design issues, that's for a later day. That's where, if you approve this, we've got to come back because it's a special use permit, and this board has ad nauseam dealt with special use permits. You know that you've got to look at the design. Staff has indicated through the Fire Department and the Police Department some concerns, uh, the initial design, and because of that, substantial changes have been made into that initial design. But we've not submitted those yet because there's no point at this stage until we know whether in fact we can even do this in your particular town. Just a quick couple things from your ordinances. Your section 6.2.4.2, only an attorney would draft something like that, I'm sorry, says, "General Commercial District." The C2 General Commercial District, which is what we're in, is intended to foster a thriving commercial business community with a variety of uses, activities, and scales. The general commercial design allows the broadest range of uses and is located throughout the town paralleling US 158 and US 64. This district represents the areas that are anticipated to have future concentrations of use, and that's the component that we're dealing with. And that's the component that we're dealing with here. Use. That serve as destinations or hubs for activity for the town and are appropriate for shopping centers, that's what we are, and large footprint retail stores. As I've already indicated to you, and as already shown, we're not suggesting that this language that we proposed has to be the language for the limitations. I know at the planning board, there was one planning board member who was very concerned about the fact that it was so limited. I understand that. But at the end of the day, it's one of those, as I've already indicated, conflicting issues. If we open it up too much, is that creating a problem for you, the commissioners, of being expansive to a highest degree of involved in the town, which you typically don't want? So, we tried to design it so that it limits it, so that it's not so broad. I want to read a couple of your land use plan issues. And forgive me, I didn't bring my glasses. LU5, promote contiguous and cohesive nodes of commercial development of appropriate size and massing for the surrounding area. Again, we're a shopping center. We acknowledge that, agree with that, that's what it is. And as such, as set forth in your C2 and in your land use, that's the type of area where you want to have a concentration of things. Secondly, LU9, encourage land uses that serve the needs of both year-round and seasonal residents in support of the town's overall vision of the community. I submit to you that wanting coffee in the mornings is universal. LU12, utilize onsite wastewater systems as the preferred method of wastewater treatment as long as they remain viable to effectively treat effluent and protect water quality. This particular development, shopping center, has just that, its own plant, if you want to call it that, to service all the buildings. So, by adding this particular product there, we're not putting a new septic tank in the ground in some other location. We're treating it the way it should be. All of those land use plan issues give rise to saying that this is a good thing for the I recommend to you that you approve this. It is in the public interest. If you are dissatisfied with the type of limitations we've put in our proposed ordinance change, certainly you are available to change those should you wish to do so. We're not trying to prevent others from doing it. And on candor, we're trying to prevent it, to make it so that we can do it. Others, if the town wants them to have that ability, is fine. If any of the commissioners have any questions of the applicant, I'll be happy to respond to the same. However, as I've already indicated, those concerns which have been raised and are valid, you know, parking, traffic, internal flows, those are design issues. That's not what's before you today. What's before you today is use issue. Can we in fact do this? And I submit to you, if you turn us down under the concerns that we will not be able to design something that meets your requirements, then that's a concern. Because I'm not a person who can design anything. That's what we hire the experts to do. And if they can't design something that meets all of your staff's concerns, and you, the board's concerns, because remember, it comes right back to you, we don't get it. Again, I'll answer any questions that the board may have.
All right. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Gray? Anybody?
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Gray. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this proposed text amendment? Does the board wish to receive any other information on this before you begin your deliberations? Any questions for anybody? If not? All right. At this time, we will conclude the public hearing, and the board may begin its deliberations.
Thank you. Board, noted there were no questions, so I'm wondering if somebody, for the purpose of discussion, would like to put a motion on the table.
I'm not prepared for that at this time.
Okay. Well, let's, let's open it up.
That's just me personally.
Let's, let's open it up for discussion, hear what folks' thoughts are. I'll start on this thing. Can Mr. Sanders?
Yeah, I'm a little conflicted on this one. Mr. Gray brought up some good points, and of course, so did the town about the traffic concerns and the parking concerns. So, I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say.
Mr. Brinkley?
I don't know how I ask it, but it's to the attorney. He's saying that we know the site. If my decision is based on what is proposed to go in there, not based on just drive-throughs, am I wrong in doing that?
Well, it's, the, the text amendment would affect every property in the same zoning district and the same designation. So, it is not a site-specific thing, although it does, there is a site in, in mind, obviously, that the applicant has.
So, I need to consider the use, and the use only, and not the site?
That's correct. The use in the zoning district only. That's correct. There could be, for all we know, there could be other, other locations for which this could be appropriate, or that could, could apply.
And that's the concern that I have, because I've, I've got no issues with drive-throughs in other areas for the, for the use. I do have issues and concerns with the site, which, if you're telling me I can't consider that, if it's approved, they'll come back.
Well, again, it's, it's, you should not consider it as a site-specific thing because it's a legislative thing. But in addition to that, for the board to adopt this, remember that you also have to find that it is, you have to make a consistency finding, that the, that the text amendment would be consistent with your land use plan. And, and the, Ms. Wyatt provided information from her and from the planning board as to why they felt that was not the case. So, that's something that you'd have to be prepared to make a finding on in order to adopt.
Wouldn't the verbiage of restricted to 20 acres or greater eliminate and make it a site-specific? Because there's no other 20 acres-
No. It's, it's still not site-specific, even if there's only one place in town that meets that criteria. It's not a site-specific thing because it's a, it is a text amendment of general application to everything within the same zoning district. So, even if there's only one in the area, it might, it might make it specific to one location, but it is a, it is a, it's a zoning ordinance of general application.
I actually have a, I have a question. It's probably for Kelly. When we initially made the change in the UDO to not allow drive-throughs in multi-use commercial developments, when was that and what was the reasoning for that?
I believe that was obviously a conversation that was had as we were developing the UDO. Because I think it's pretty clear, as we were going through the comprehensive plan, we, we had very specific conversations about lack of interest in having drive-throughs in our, in those certain character areas. But I would have to, I, I would like to go back and at least explore what the conversation was. I think in these instances, design and traffic concerns and issues were, were primarily the reasons we did not do that.
Okay.
But I would need to go back and double-check.
That's fine. Really, my thought process is, if it hap, we did it for a reason, and we made that our UDO to not allow drive-throughs and multi-use for various reasons. I'm wary, and I have a lot of concerns with changing that to make it so that this business can go into the site. I think it was there for a reason.
Your actual 2.8.2. A is, you can't have drive-throughs in any of these areas. And it doesn't state in that land, in that, it doesn't state in there, just in mixed-use. It says you can't have a drive-through in US-158, US-64, NC-12, or, or SR-1243.
Well, and I think that's for a reason, and I don't think we should-
What you'll, what you'll see with the UDO is a lot of things got erased and deleted and moved around from the original land use plan that we have fought for the last six years that I've been on this board to correct.
Do you think this is something that needs to be corrected?
I think it's something, as Ms. Wyatt pointed out, needs to be dealt with a little further because, you know, the, the old mayor may have more insight than, on this than any of the five parties sitting up here.
Well, I, I'll offer some insight, having sat through years of meetings of developing the UDO. And, and it's, I, I think that's what brings us to this conflict, to some degree. Town in Agshead does not like drive-throughs. Every time we ever have a conversation about what uses we like and don't like in Agshead, drive-throughs come up as one thing that we wish we didn't have. But we've never dealt directly with that question of saying, let's outlaw drive-throughs. Let the ones that are here be non-conforming. Let's get rid of drive-throughs entirely. So, when you're sitting there, and you put up a piece of paper, and you say, okay, let's talk about shopping centers. What uses are we going to permit in there? Drive-throughs aren't going to make the cut because we don't like them. So, we're not going to add them to any list of, of anything that we're, that we're creating afresh. And so, we, that was sort of the process. Okay, now we're talking about mixed use. What are we going, what are we going to let in there? And we, we start talking about uses, and drive-throughs being the black sheep always get, always get cut. So, you know, having not dealt with that directly, where, you know, they're permitted. So, the, the conflict for me is, okay, they are permitted today. And so, let me deal with that context. You know, I'm not, I'm not taking a vote to take that off the table. It's on the table. It's permitted in the C2 zone. They're permitted in the C2 zone as standalones. So, the same applicant could go to, there's a vacant lot full of trees across the street. They could go to that lot and build a Starbucks, or any other drive-through. They could buy the go-kart track at the, immediately adjacent to the shopping center and build a drive-through restaurant. They can build it, and that's all in conflict with the Whalebone District, but they can build it anywhere but in the shopping center. And it's, to me, that's, that's odd. You know, if you're going to permit it, you know, I mean, you can, you can look at this two ways. I mean, you can look at it, I'm, I'm a person who, when we're having those discussions, I'm, I'm a favor of, of development in nodes. In other words, concentrating development in, you know, around intersections and places that are walkable, where, you know, you can get to multiple uses without having to drive out on the highway and go to another drive and make a turn. You know, let's, let's put them, you know, wherever we can, let's concentrate that development there. So, that's a positive way of looking at it, is, you know, let's, we, we already have a development there. Again, not looking at a site plan, not weighing whether parking works or anything else, let's, let's concentrate it. The other way of looking at it is to say, I don't like shopping centers, they're a blight on the environment. I don't like drive-through restaurants, they're a blight on the environment. If you permit both of them, let's put them in the same bag. You know? And so, just as, just considering the use without any other consideration about curb cuts, lights, parking, anything else, I, I can't find a reason to exclude a use that's permitted all around it from being in the middle of it.
I think that if we are thinking about adding something to a shopping center, we do have to think about traffic concerns and stuff like that. When you mentioned the go-kart next door, we wouldn't have the same traffic concerns where we have businesses crossing back and forth, and pedestrians trying to walk from the business to the standalone structure that we're putting in there. And I know that you mentioned a gym could go in there, but a gym's not the same as Starbucks. And the demand for Starbucks going back and forth, when we look in Killable Hills, you have two businesses that cross over that. And that's, that causes a huge congestion there. I can't imagine, if we put it in a shopping center, that we wouldn't see that tenfold.
But if you put it in the shopping center, that's one design by one owner where they have to resolve it within their own context. If you put it on a lot across the street or adjacent, that's another curb cut without a signalized intersection. So, that traffic is, to me, a balancing factor. You know, you're either dealing with traffic internally, or you're dealing with traffic externally. I'd rather make the applicant deal with the traffic internally than, all things being equal, make it easier to do a new curb cut than to put it in a place that already has
Question for the lawyer. I guess it's site-specific to 20 acres, as you were saying. And if we pass this, it could, there's not technically, right now, another development that big. But I mean, if you look at redevelopment, there could be.
Well, it's, again, it's, it's a technical issue, but it's not a site-specific amendment, even though there's only one site in town that it might apply to. Because it's not, it doesn't designate a specific site. It describes a site, and there may only be one that meets those criteria at present. But it does not make it site-specific.
I make a motion, we table this under multiple conditions that have been mentioned, so the planning board can work those out, bring it back to us in January or February.
Second.
And I would, in that motion, I would say, go on and plan the, if it works for the planning department, go on and plan the public hearing for January.
Okay.
What are they supposed to be working out, the conditions?
Well, like I said, I understand what the UDO states, but this land use map states that you can't have no drive-throughs anywhere. So, in that corridor for character looks, we've got a conflict there that needs to be worked out before we can discuss land use in general, in my mind. Maybe I'm wrong, but, you know, this is the problem I've had with the UDO since the UDO came out. In one section, we can do it, in another section, it conflicts and says you can't have that, that use in that location. So, I understand what Ms. Wyatt said, and the mayor said, that all around it, we can incorrect, and C2 you can, but in this appropriate land uses in the corridor character areas described, you can't. So, that would basically mean you can't do it across the street, if we're holding up every single thing that we've put in the place.
We have a motion and a second, so we're, we're in discussion. If we're talking about, and I, I understand, because of the specific listing, you're in a conflict with the land use plan. I mean, by, by putting a Starbucks in a shopping center, you're in a conflict with the land use plan, the way it's written.
But according to this, the way I read it and interpret it, anywhere inside of the character, corridor's character area, anywhere inside of that, you can, it specifically states, restaurants, walk up, sit down, no drive-throughs. Over here on the other one says exactly the same thing. So, you're, you're, if you allow Taco Bell to come in the place, you've, you've, under this UDO, you, you have to have a special use permit to do so again. Because you're not, it's not, nowhere in there can it legally be done now. That's non-conforming based on this UDO, in my mind. If I'm wrong, Andy, or Kelly, or the attorney can correct me, and I wish they would. But the way I read that, we've got two con, we've got a conflict.
Yeah. And your hope is that the planning board would address and look at that conflict?
Well, yes, and drive-throughs. I mean, if you're saying we allow them on single-family homes, I'm with you. I, I mean, not single-family homes, but single property lines, and independent property lines, fine. If the site, and it's not my problem to design the site, it's my problem to decide whether we want the use. And if the site can sustain the use under whatever it works out to be, then this, I don't have a problem with it. have a problem with it going on any of the shopping centers in town, if it can be sustained. That's not my decision to make. My decision is to make that we want the use of drive-throughs or not. And what I find is the conflict between drive-throughs in this character area versus drive-throughs that we're saying we can do.
Yeah. I'm not sure what they're going to recommend, other than a change in the land use plan.
Or no change in the land use plan.
I'm sorry?
Or they could recommend no change in the land use plan.
I'll support the motion, just to give them a chance to look at it. But again, if I'm looking at just overall, and I can't look at the site, I'll report. Because like I said, I don't have any problems with drive-throughs in certain areas. My concern is drive-through there. But again, I can't look at that, according to the attorney. I've only got the use, look at the use.
Are you concerned with drive-throughs in shopping centers?
At Arab Bank Mall? No. I don't. I don't. Again, that's hypothetical. I haven't seen them. There was one there before. But you're looking at two different areas, in my opinion. So, that's just where I'm at, but I know we're just in discussion, but I would support the-
Yeah, and I think we should go ahead and take a vote on the motion to table. I guess I'd take a little more, I'm not sure how to characterize it in terms of my stance with the conflicts in the UDO, and between the UDO and the ordinance. You know, the ordinance theoretically follows the UDO, the ordinance is following the UDO, and we have a context where certain kinds of development are permitted all around something. You know, I would be inclined to say that the gist of the UDO is those issues of character and concentrating development and the other things, and I would be for just letting us put the drive-through in the shopping center. But I don't see, without taking the time to go through modifying the UDO, how that conflict gets eliminated. All right, so we have a motion and a second to table to January, and to send this back to the planning board, to see if they can resolve this conflict. Any further discussion?
One other question for the manager. Would that allow the, would that be possible?
I think Mayor Protim suggested we go ahead and set the public hearing.
If it's possible.
If it's possible. And I guess we would have to make sure we meet the advertising requirements for the public hearing, which I guess we could do, so-
I guess my, I figured we could meet the advertising requirements, but does it give enough time to get it on the planning board agenda and for them to prepare?
That's really a question for Kelly. It's more of a capacity issue, I think. I mean, theoretically, it would give enough time, but, you know, with the holidays and when the meeting-
So the planning board's going to be meeting December 19th? I think, like the town manager said, I mean, obviously, there's time available to put We'll get something before the planning board.
I mean, we could do the February meeting. I'm just saying, don't let it-
No, I mean, I feel like, I feel like we, we'll be able to at least have a conversation at the planning board level, and the hope would be to have a recommendation back to you. But if we don't come to that consensus, then we'll obviously let you know, and perhaps we can bump the public hearing back until February. We'll do our very best.
Okay. Anything further? All right, so this is on a motion to table. All of those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Nay. Nay. For me, please. All right, thank you. John, that brings us to item three, please.
All right, so this is our third public hearing, and at this time, we will begin the public hearing to consider text amendments to the UDO as it relates to jewelry shops and acceptable accessory uses within them. On this item, we'll begin with the presentation of the staff's analysis, provided by the planning and development director, Kelly Wyatt.
Thank you. Just quickly, at their October 4th meeting, the Board of Commissioners adopted an ordinance that did allow brick-and-mortar jewelry shops to host temporary events where precious metal vendors could come in there, not to exceed a period of 90 days. During that time, we had a local jeweler approach the board and request that consideration be given to allowing these vendors to be able to appraise and potentially purchase other acceptable items. And staff was directed to explore what that would look like in terms of drafting and ordinance. So, when we did that, we saw that Article 45, which we've talked about a lot, from the general statutes, Section 66. It lists various types of business transactions that are related to essentially purchasing second-hand goods from the public. And based upon the definition in Article 45, going beyond the parameters of precious metals, you're now looking at what it calls a currency converter, or a cash converter. And I included that section of Article 45 in the staff report. Currency converter is going to be a person engaged in the business of purchasing goods from the public for cash at a permanently-located retail store. And then the second item there is about itinerant merchants, which the town doesn't allow. So, just going through there, staff would like to note that the initial amendment was made on behalf of a business owner seeking to do business with an entity who absolutely appears to be a highly reputable vendor. And while text amendments are not site-specific, rather, they're available to any business meeting the adopted criteria, which in this case is going to be a retail jewelry store. Moving beyond the parameters of precious metals, staff does not have the ability to regulate the types of items being brought in to, brought in by public for appraisal. On their website, National Rarities states that they currently buy fine jewelry, scrap gold, silver, diamonds, watches, coins, currency, bullion, other rarities, fine art, luxury goods, firearms, and so much more. While staff cannot regulate the types of items that may be taken to such an event for appraisal and purchase, and while staff must enforce any activity of this nature through the statutory requirements of currency converters, if we didn't want to call it a currency converter, we could apply different terminology, such as antique and collectible dealer, as it pertains to the text amendment itself. I will say, in doing the research, cash converters can also be referred to as second-hand goods dealers. There are some differences, as we talked about last time with pawn shops. They're both businesses that deal with second-hand goods, but there are differences in how they operate their business. Primarily, a pawn shop is going to provide a collateralized loan, taking temporary ownership of the item and holding it until the customer pays that loan back, whereas what National Rarities is going to do, and what any second-hand dealer or cash converter is going to do, is just appraise the item and offer cash on the spot, and not deal with any type of loan scenario. Staff has provided draft ordinance for your consideration, and we did just highlight the changes in yellow, because there's been a couple different iterations of this. At their October 17th meeting, the planning board voted unanimously to recommend denial of the ordinance as it has been drafted. The planning board made clear that they were in no way concerned with how the applicant would operate this type of use. They did, however, have several concerns with the amendment, as it is not site-specific and vendor-specific, and would apply to any jewelry shop within the town. It was consensus of the planning board that should the Board of Commissioners be inclined to adopt the text amendment, that consideration be given to that 90-day limitation of operation of this type of business? The planning board felt like 90 days was probably too long, especially if one person chose to operate their cash conversion event for 90 continuous days, that could become problematic and likely abused. Most members felt that limiting it to a few weekends within a calendar year would be more appropriate, whereas others just felt that the use was problematic, regardless of the days of operation. The other concern that was expressed was the ability for a business to accept and purchase firearms. Planning board members expressed concern that firearms could be brought in for appraisal and purchase, and we did note that there's this gray area between what one considers an antique and a collectible, and accepting something that is inoperable versus an operational firearm, and how we handle any type of licensing or registration or transfer of those items. So that being said, obviously, the staff would continue to recommend denial. The planning board recommended denial as well. But should the Board of Commissioners be inclined to consider it, conversation about these two elements of the 90 days and the firearms would be appreciated. And that's all I have.
All right, does the board have any questions for Ms. Wyatt?
Yes, sir. Can you elaborate more on the firearms? What do we care if it's operable or inoperable?
I care from the perspective of, I am not familiar with the requirements of having a registration, if a firearm is registered or permitted, or how that transfer occurs. I'm just not familiar with that. I know Chief Hale and I talked for two seconds about the terminology and some misunderstanding, you know, like, there's just misinformation about it, and to be very honest with you, I don't understand it all.
I ask the police chief a question?
Yes.
Chief, could you come up, please?
Yes, sir.
The issues with transfer and ownership and registration, can you elaborate more on that? And if, as proposed, without eliminating firearms, if there would be an issue with them accepting antiques or any other type of firearm?
From my understanding, from looking at what National Rarities had in the past, it was more antique firearms, where you wouldn't have to have your FFL license and stuff to actually purchase or buy them from someone as listed as an antique. If they were to do any other exchanges of firearms for modern-day handguns or any other weapons or whatnot, they would have to have their FFL. And that would be a requirement that would be put on them by the ATF to go through that background, etc. And then once they, if they did have their FFL dealer, then they would be able to purchase someone walking in, and then would be required to go through the background requirements required through the ATF.
And National Rarities has done these events in North Carolina before?
To my knowledge, yes.
And that's the research that I found?
Yes.
And you're aware of them purchasing antique firearms?
Specifically purchasing antique firearms here in North Carolina? No, I'm not. But it's my understanding that they have purchased antique firearms in the past, just from reviewing their website and doing a little digging from that side point of it.
So any violation of them purchasing a weapon that is not antique would be a violation with ATF?
Yes.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Wyatt? Anything? All right. Thank you, Kelly. Is there any member of the public that wishes to comment on this proposed text amendment? Does the board wish to receive any other information on this before you begin your deliberations? If not, we will now conclude the public hearing, and the board may deliberate on this proposed text amendment.
Before we consider the motion, we'll open it up for discussion. I'll just say that I think, for the most part, the ordinance did what the board asked to do. I will say personally, I'm more than happy to consider fewer days for something like this.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
I had the same concerns. It wasn't the planning board, it was not so much concerned with the applicant specifically, but the 90 days of someone else that could likely be abused, and that was a concern.
All right, thank you. Commissioner-
I would agree.
Okay.
Limiting the number of days, I have no problem with, about changing that, but also I have no problems with the firearms either, because that's incumbent upon them. If they purchase a firearm that's not an antique, that's a violation of federal law, and that's upon them.
Right.
Yeah, I don't have any problem limited to days.
Okay. Well, we're talking about the number of days. I hate to be specific to an applicant, but it was my understanding that, you know, historically, it's been very limited. And, you know, I would think that, you know, this number could be as small as 14 days and probably satisfy what the applicant was looking for.
Once a year, or a few times, or?
In a calendar year.
In a calendar year, no more than 14 days.
No more than 14.
In any configuration. So you could do a few weekends, or, but that would be it.
Yeah, with 14 days, without it being required to be consecutive, you could do it once a month, and then, you know, a couple days, two months.
Right, right. Or two one-week-
Mm-hmm.
Or big events or something, you know, of that order.
So is that your motion?
So do I need to, would there be any other modification of what's proposed necessary with regard to the firearms ordinance?
I mean, I would refer to the police chief, but I don't-
You don't think so? So the ordinance as presented, with the exception of changing the number of days?
Work. Chief Hale, can I ask you one other question?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any concerns with National Rarities or any other precious metal dealers coming in and accepting for purchase firearms and antique weapons?
With this company, and from what I've seen, I don't have any concerns. I know this particular business has had this in the past. We've not had any issues. And I think this type of event is not bringing somebody in that is looking to get rid of a firearm that was acquired illegally or anything else. I think the antique portion of the firearms, they're far and few between, where I don't think there will be an overpour of people coming in looking to get rid of firearms or weapons.
So I would say, it would be presented with a change of the dates.
Okay, then I will make that motion. The motion to approve the ordinance as presented, with the exception that the 90 days be reduced to 14 days.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. I think it's probably time for about a five or 10-minute break, so the board will be Board and the planning director. Kelly, you've been up there a lot today.
Yeah, this one will be quick, though, so.
His last words.
Our first item, we just have noted the relevant, oh, no. I might need you to take over my computer.
I can do it.
The first thing we had there was just the relevant meetings that the planning board had attended through the month of November. The planning, well, the planning department, rather. The planning board met on November 21st. We primarily focused on the discussion around multifamily development. We got the ordinances provided to Attorney Leidy and Attorney Hobbs. They've provided some good feedback on this, so we're very hopeful that once we get this to the planning board December 19th, we'll be close to wrapping it up and getting that back to the Board of Commissioners. As we've said, the planning board does meet December 19th. We're going to try to wrap up that multifamily. We did want to continue the conversation on discouraging or prohibiting people from parking on their septic areas and drain fields. on their septic areas and drain fields. We will be having the conversation on drive-through restaurants and any conflicts between the UDO and the comp plan. Additionally, one thing that has come in that wasn't included in your packet was a text amendment request that we consider amending our current UDO to explore allowing what they are calling legacy hotels and motels to allow the rental of some units on a long-term basis. The way the ordinance is currently written, those are for transient use only. But this would be to allow some of the older hotels and motels to rent their units on a long-term basis and not just for transient uses. So the December 19th planning board meeting will be kind of a big one. Provided some information about the decentralized wastewater management plan and the Septic Health Committee, most of that. I believe Town Manager Garment is going to also go over with regard to the newest rules from the Derr County Health Department going into effect in January, so I won't belabor that too much. Our Deputy Planning Director, Joe Costello, has been working really hard on the EV action plan and getting low-wire the electrician, Daniel Parsons, and the EVO charge to make sure that using this combination will meet all the requirements for air grants. So we're hopeful to get that kicked off really soon. Sand relocation, dune management is going well. We've allocated about $130,000 of what had been allocated to us, and we've received 47 sand relocation applications. Of those 47, we have about 37 active sites out there right now doing sand relocation. We have an update on our permit turnaround, which is still doing well. And I appreciate all staff, all their planning staff, for keeping those numbers where they're at. And then just an update on the Dowdy Park Farmers Market. There's a lot in the staff report. One thing I did want to note is that when we had our evening holiday market, which was from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., our event coordinator, Paige, just wanted to make sure that I was aware the number of locals that were attending and the number of locals that were so very appreciative for us having a market in the evening. And so it may be that next season, you hear us coming back with an idea to have more evening markets that will be more suitable for our locals to attend, so we'll sort that out. But we have a candy cane hunt coming up on December 14th at 4:45. And then we have our holiday decorating contest, which is ongoing. Entries are due by December 12th. We're gonna, the Art and Culture Committee will judge those on December 19th, so. And then we have our final holiday market coming up this Saturday. That's all I have for you. Happy to answer any questions.
Just have one more question. What a great job on your turnaround on the permits. Thank you for, and your staff for the great work. Just kind of a quick question. If you were, it said it does not include trade permits. If you were to include trade, how much fluctuation would it be on your average turnaround time? Just if you have any idea?
It would, it would drop these numbers. It would drop, it would drop all of these numbers to even less, because we turn around our trade usually the same day.
I would, I would think so, too, but just wanted to clarify that. But again, thank you to you and your staff.
Thank you. Very much appreciate it.
Thank you, Kelly. That brings us to committee reports. I'll start with Commissioner Sanders. Anything to report?
No reports.
Where are we with the shoreline?
We actually got denied our grant, so. Isn't that correct? We get, yeah, but.
You just found out this week.
Yeah, just found out this week. But Town Manager said that they are looking at some other possibilities to check on some other grants, to try to keep moving forward.
All right, very good, thank you. Commissioner Brinkley?
Director Period Visery Counsel, so we had some trouble meeting, trying to come together on a date, but we're actually meeting on Monday at 4:00 in the morning for our meeting, so we'll have a report next time.
Very good. Commissioner Sears?
Nothing to report from tourism or housing.
Okay, all right.
Still no word on the housing.
Okay, yep. Crickets.
Crickets.
All right. Commissioner Lambert, we look forward to getting along.
Seven.
Committees to report. All right. The next item on the agenda is that we have an appointment to the Town Planning Board created by the vacancy created by our newest commissioner. And so we are grateful for our commissioner, but we need to fill that position. You had a list of candidates before you, and so I'm wondering if anyone has a thought or wants to make a motion.
Just a point of clarification, somebody had reached out to me and was interested in the planning board and actually said that they applied. If their name's not on here, I understand it's because they did not meet the timeframe. Just a point of clarification.
Yes, okay.
Understanding that, I would make a motion to appoint David Thompson.
All right, is there a second to that?
Second.
A motion and a second to appoint Mr. Thompson. Any discussion? Hearing none, then all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Look forward to welcoming Mr. Thompson to the planning board. Next item on our agenda is a resolution authorizing a water resource development grant, and I see the town engineer moving toward the podium.
Good morning, Mayor and Commissioners. Included in your board packet is a resolution to file an application for a water resources development grant. This is really trying to leverage some existing grants that we recently received, and that was for the two Lassie Grants for South Old Oregon Inlet Road for Project Area Number 12 and Number 13. Project Area Number 12 is in the area of Junko Street. Project Area Number 13 is in the area of Derr Drive. And so, just to recap, what those two projects entail is that it implements new infrastructure along the roadway to be able to collect roadway runoff and floodwaters, and then pump from each one of those locations. For Project Area Number 13, it's to pump to an infiltration area to the north end of Fire Station 21. And for Project Area Number 12, it's to pump to a dune infiltration system here in the area of Junko Street. What we have up here on the screen is an aerial overview of the Junko Street beach access. See if I can direct my cursor. We'll have along the roadway, along the eastern right-of-way margin, parallel to 1243, a series of drop inlets and pipes that goes to a central pump that will then pump to a, ooh, there we go. And we will have a dune infiltration system under the, under the vehicle crossover going over onto the beach. What that infrastructure does not consider is any surface improvements. So we see the Water Resources Development Grant as a way to go ahead and leverage some of those underground improvements with making some surface improvements. There's a couple items that we're looking at. That would be the conversion of some of the asphalt parking spaces to a pervious paver type to be able to reduce runoff onto 1243, looking at potential resurfacing of the drive aisle of that parking lot, and also the potential for remote operation for that pump station. And so, included in your packet is a resolution that, that puts in a request in the amount of $200,000 for a water resources development grant application. There's a 50% cost share. We've indicated up to $200,000, which is the maximum amount permitted by that grant. We're still working through the cost, so we anticipate that it will be less than that amount. But the town share would be 50% of that. And we're not asking for funding right now for the towns match. That will come before you with a future CIP request and be included in next year's budget if this grant is approved by the state. And so, just to summarize, this request is to approve the resolution authorizing the Town Manager to execute and file an application on behalf of the Town and Act Set with the state of North Carolina for Water Resources Development Grant. And I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for David?
David, this grant won't hold up the project. This is for extra, right?
It, it will not. And, and so, this project is tracking a little bit behind on the northernmost project. The northernmost project is more shovel-ready. This is going to take some additional permitting, and so, you know, we anticipate that permitting to go on like nine-to-12-month periods, so this should not incur any delay with the overall planning and design of this project.
Thank you.
Commissioner Brinkley?
Yes, sir.
Sanders? All right, thank you, David.
All right.
Appreciate that. Having seen the resolution and heard David's report, is a motion would be in order?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, thank you. That brings us to any items from the town attorney. We will have a closed session. John, do you have anything else?
Other than the closed session, no, sir.
All right, thank you. Then that brings us to the Town Manager, and the first item is an update on Public Services. So David, you do back up.
All right. Over the past couple months, I've been providing an update which gives a ground view perspective of some of the improvements. And this month, we're going to take a, an aerial overview of some of the improvements for the Public Services site. And I want to thank Roberta for going ahead and coordinating this. And so, the, the first couple of shots give an overview of the overall site. And then if you can follow the cursor, this is taken from a southeast viewpoint. So my cursor here up on the screen highlights where the administration building is, right here, over by the water tower. This is the new combined fleet facilities and sanitation building. Here in the background is the new equipment storage building. And being masked by the trees over here by the, by the pond is the new water distribution Here's a different perspective from the fresh pond from the west, looking eastward. You can see in the foreground, this down here to your lower left, that's the new water distribution building. Here is the equipment building. Here is the fleet facilities and sanitation building, and the, the administration building over across Lark Avenue. Here we, we've got some closer looks. This is of the, the largest building, the combined fleet facilities and sanitation building. Where we were last month is we only had the roof and some of the walls for this section right here. That's now been added up here for the facilities portion of the facility. We're also starting to see the front wall take shape, which is highlighted here by my cursor. And then also on the backside of that, some of the interior walls have been put in place, as well as the decking for the mezzanine in that area. So as it stands right now, we've got the three walls up, which is the east wall, the rear wall, and then also the west wall, and then the front wall's starting to take shape. The, the slab rough-in for the, for the utilities has been completed, and some of the interior wall framing is, is currently in, in progress. Here's a look from the backside. You can see this pretty seafoam color. That's part of a liquid air barrier that's been applied. That's more of a waterproof sealant that is being applied to all the buildings. In front of that will go some insulation and then a brick veneer facade for most of the buildings in conjunction with some other siding elements. Here's a closer look at the front side of the building. As you can see, there's a lot of activity that's occurring over here on this site, not only with our public services operation, but as well with the construction crews that have been working continuously on erecting and framing the various structures there on the complex. Here is a look of the new administration building. You can see we've got the exterior improvements in place, the roofing on, the liquid air barrier in place. We've got all the, the doors and windows framed out. And you can see more recently here, this over here on the, on the southeast side of the building, these are the forms for the retaining wall, which this is going to be the drop-off area for the public, for our new recycle center facility. That was just poured earlier this week, and then they will come behind, they will go ahead and backfill in, and then pour a slab on top of that. So a lot of progress has been made there on the administration site. And here's a view looking at it from the northeast perspective. You can see the ramp up. This is the drop-off area here, and the ramp down. One of the things that occurred earlier this week is that we had this site partitioned off so we could maintain our brushyard operation. Well, the contractor is ready to go ahead and start improvements for, for the site here on the north side of the site. So we had our brushyard operation in conjunction with the temporary fueling station, which is right here. We just went ahead and took that operation out of service earlier this week. These tanks will be removed, the building will be demoed, and these roll-off containers will be removed from the site, so the site contractor can come in and start with grading operations and other site improvements here on the north side of that site. Here's a quick look at the water distribution building. This is taken from eastern perspective, and here's from the front side. Previously, we had all the walls up. The air barrier was, the liquid air barrier was applied. Now we're starting to see the brick veneer go in place, and you can see right here on the northeast corner that they've started to go ahead and lay in that brick veneer. So there's been a lot of progress that has been made over the past month. Like I said, we've had to go ahead and, and adapt with some of our operations. Beginning next month, they'll start on the final building, which is going to be the vehicle storage building, which goes in this area right here where we have a lot of our vehicles currently parked. So we anticipate those operations to begin just after the first of the year. So a lot of progress, a lot of different buildings currently under varying levels of construction. And as it stands right now, based upon the most recent scheduled projections, the water distribution and the administration building should be around the same timeframe as far as occupation. That seems to be trending towards the end of March 2024. The larger building, the combined fleet facilities and sanitation building, is tracking towards the end of May occupation. And then we've got the other two buildings. The vehicle storage will probably be towards the end of summer 2024. The equipment storage may be in the spring timeframe with an overall project completion- The equipment storage may be in the spring timeframe with an overall project completion date of October 2024. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thanks. Anyone have questions for David? Would this be an appropriate time? And would it place any burden on the work or cause any interruption for the board to take a field trip out there during one of our next couple of meetings?
No, we can go ahead and schedule that.
Okay. All right. Would the board be interested in making a visit there and seeing the work? We, it's possible that the January meeting, if we end up with a public hearing or hearings, could be lengthy. So, how about if we target the February meeting? All right. We'll do that. And just everybody have it on your radar that perhaps after we adjourn the meeting, we'll jump in the van or everybody can drive down there because we would be dispersing at that point and we'll go down there and make a visit.
All right. We'll go ahead and we'll get that scheduled with the contractor.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's see. That brings us to item K2, a request for a town hall fire station master plan. Andy, do you want to speak to this?
Yes.
All right. It's hard to believe just a few years ago, the Public Works Complex started out as a master plan. So, you know, we've suggested doing another one of these. And a couple of things have happened recently that sort of solicited this idea. And up on the screen, we have, let's see, Town Hall is here. Can you see the cursor?
Yeah.
And then, we have the fire station 16 across the street. The town now owns the old Village Realty building. The tenants have now left, and we are currently using that as a fitness facility. On the Town Hall campus, we also have the old fitness facility, which is down here on the southern border. And next door to that, we have a Public Works Maintenance Garage, which is unconditioned space. And in the center of the site, we have a cell tower. And then, obviously, the boardroom on the southeast corner of the property. So, recently, we had some issues with the fitness facility, the old fitness facility. We had some mold in the building, and we had to temporarily close the building. And since our tenants left Village Realty Building, we are now using that building as a temporary fitness facility. As the board is aware, we are looking at designing a new fire station and EMS station on the property at 105 Sea Chase, which is the location of the temporary fitness facility. One of the goals we would like to achieve is to have a new fitness facility, potentially, if the board is amenable to that, by the time that we need to tear down this building to allow the county to build the EMS station. I've talked to a few of the board members about the old fitness facility building. We have received some quotes to go in and remediate the issues at the building. Would be about $50,000. I don't think anybody sees the point in spending the money on that old building. And so, we certainly wouldn't just go in and replace that building in its current footprint without considering what it would need to be to support a future fitness facility and also considering what other uses we might potentially build on the site. The boardroom, the building that we're in, is an old building. We've certainly had meetings in this building that have exceeded the capacity of the room. So, it's realistic to think that at some point, we will need a new boardroom facility. The Town Hall building was built in the late 90s. It currently well supports the uses that we have for our police department and administrative staff, but we would certainly need to explore what potential uses we might have. And I know Perry Hale's over there salivating at this. And then, if we tear down the fire station to build a new fire station, we have the south wing, which has been a training facility for staff. It's also been a location for a town EOC during storm events. And so, there's a lot of uses that I think we need to consider for these two properties, these three properties. And it just makes sense to do a master plan now so that we know what we need and we can program those things. And then, once we go and potentially build the fitness facility, which might be the next thing we do, we know how big it needs to be, we know what the design should look like and where it should go and how it complements everything else we're trying to do. So, we have asked Oakley Collier Architects to give us a scope of work to do a master plan. The reason we reached out to them is because not only are they going to be the architect doing the fire station EMS station for the county, but we've had a really good experience with them doing the Public Works project. And so, we've got the scope in front of you now. We'd like authorization to move this forward. And the primary goal at this point would be to complete the master plan within the next three to four months so we could potentially include a project in next year's budget if we're ready to do that for a fitness facility. Right now, we're looking at about two years to have the old Village Realty building as a temporary fitness facility. So, if we work quickly, that would give us time to work on something between now and then. So, that is the proposal before you. Happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Sanders.
What's the status of the old building next to the, I mean, what's the status of the building next to the old fitness center?
That is currently still actively being used as a Public Works garage. And so, we use it as a storage building and a workspace, sort of a remote site for Public
Commissioner Brinkley.
I appreciate the aggressiveness of looking at the fitness room. This board of the town has always been about fitness for our employees. They now have a good space to work in that's not eat up with mold and smells, and it's just a good space. So, I appreciate the push to have something in place that's nice before the Village Realty building, our building, is torn down.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And you said the word was the police were adequately?
Well, no. I mean, I was kidding, but you know, the, you know, the police have a training room right now. You know, when I, I've talked to the police chief about this project, and you know, he's obviously thinking about what his future might, needs might be. And so, you know, sort of brainstorming, well, you've got the training facility, which is part of the main building now, that could potentially become something else for the police. And, you know, we could also consider designing a training facility that would serve the town departments for police, fire, and other users, you know, taking the south wing out of service, maybe using that training facility for other police space. You know, that could be something you build into this plan. You know, I mean, who knows? You know, that...
That's right. We're doing the master plan.
Yeah. We want to explore all of our potential future needs and decide what we want to do. So...
Thank you.
Everything's on the table.
Mr. Sears.
No. Thanks. I'm looking forward to it.
Okay. Thank you. Then, do you like this in the form of a motion or a nod?
Just consensus.
Yeah. I think it sounds, looks like consensus here to move forward with that.
All right. Thank you very much.
And you are going to continue with the discussion on onsite wastewater?
Correct. Yes. And so, the, we first learned about this as part of a discussion with our septic health committee. And there were some changes that are fairly significant to the onsite wastewater regulations that affect the majority of the town. So, in order to learn more about this, Kelly Wyatt scheduled a meeting with the Dare County Health Department staff where we could learn about the changes. And they're fairly significant, and we believe that they will have a major impact on the property owners in Nagseth. And could conflict with some of the town's values. And so, I sent the board an email about these changes, but I can just go over them really quickly, some of the major changes. Starting January 1, 2024, what the new rules state is that if your septic system fails, you would be required to use your repair area as it was designated on your site plan when you received your original permit. Current practice for the last several decades has been, in most cases, if your septic system fails, you can hire a contractor to come in and take up the old drain field, turn over the soil, replace it with new soil, and then put the drain field back in the current location. And that's been the least impactful practice to the property. Even though there is a repair area shown on the site plan, that's been the current practice. With this new change, it would require you to use your designated repair area on your site plan. So, if you have your septic system in your backyard and your front yard is full of trees, you would now be required to hire a contractor to come in and take down all those trees and reroute your drain line from your house to a new location, which would be much more expensive than just repairing it as it's been done for the last several decades. That's one thing. One of the more expensive items being proposed is if you had originally shown a pre-treatment system as your repair area, which is a much more expensive system. And this is fairly common nowadays to show a pre-treatment area as a repair area because it's more compact. You would be required to utilize a pre-treatment system for the repair. And so, that takes the cost of a septic repair from around $5,000 to $7,000 up to about $30,000. And so, that's a significant change for property owners. And obviously, the town has always been very concerned about vegetation preservation. And these new requirements would certainly impact our ability to save some of our vegetation since you would now have to clear your repair area and use that space instead of using the old space. So, a lot of competing things here with town values. Another aspect of this is commercial properties. Most food service businesses, whether you're an ice cream shop or coffee shop or a restaurant, you're considered high-strength wastewater. And so, in the future, these types of businesses would now have to use a pre-treatment type system. And I especially see this impacting a lot of the town's shopping centers. In the last few years, what you've primarily seen are these small food service businesses going into a shopping center. They simply can't afford to go and build a new restaurant on a vacant piece of property. So, they're going into these shopping center spaces. I think these rules would pretty much put an end to that. Because now, in order to convert a space to a new restaurant or food service use, they would have to consider upgrading their system to a pre-treatment system. And for a commercial property, that's an extremely expensive endeavor. And I know some of you are very familiar with that idea, so you're well aware of the consequences of that. We spoke with county staff. They're obviously as concerned as we are. I spoke with the county manager about this. There is an effort underway to get some of these rules adjusted. And that could possibly happen during the legislative short session in the spring, but it would still take, you know, six months or so for that to happen. So, we are unfortunately going to be stuck with these rules starting January 1 until any changes can be made. You know, Bobby and Sheila Davies, the health director, they've been talking with the state folks about the changes and how they've impacted Dare County and what they think are some of the unintended consequences of these rules that weren't considered. So, they think they can be successful in requesting a change. And so, at this point, I think we just need to keep communicating with them to see what changes they're going to be requesting, to review those changes and make sure they're consistent with what we would like to see. And so, as that process evolves, I plan to keep you all in the loop on that and bring back anything that we want to see. And if we need to do any kind of resolution or any other form of support, we can bring that to the board as well. This process should be evolving over the next couple of months, so I'll keep you in the loop on that. Happy to answer any questions.
Has anyone said or has anyone found out what the state hoped to achieve by in particular forcing you to use a repair area?
I would be speculating on that, you know, in terms of where these rules originated from. You know, rumor that we've heard is that it came from the manufacturing or engineering community.
Right.
So, obviously, not all parts of the state are the same. You know, our conditions here, our soil conditions are a lot different than other places. So, the way these rules might work here could be different than other places. I think the regulations previously allowed engineers or designers to use best professional judgment. And I think that's one of the phrases that's been taken out of these rules, and it sort of locks you into certain solutions that, you know, you could design around previously. And that's really what they'd like to reinstate.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Well, appreciate you sticking with it and letting us know if there's anything that the board members can do at some point, especially as it moves into perhaps legislation.
And during the break, I happened to speak with Donna Creve, who represents the home builders and realtors. And she said that they're definitely opposed to these changes. So, any support they could provide, they're happy to do that, and they plan to stay involved in this as well.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
Would it be helpful if we came up with a resolution to support?
We might suggest that, you know, over the next month or two, depending on how things go.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to Board of Commissioners' agenda items. Anything that the board wishes to bring before us? And I'll start with Commissioner Lambert. Commissioner Sears?
I would like to congratulate Ms. Lambert, Mr. Brinkley for being elected. Look forward to working with you all this year. And once again, congratulate Michelle on her retirement.
Thank you. Commissioner Brinkley.
Just briefly, I'd like to wish the staff Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. I hope they get time to spend time with their family and friends. For those that we work on the holidays, thank you for your support. Please be careful. I'm honored to be back on the board to work with you guys for another four years, two years, however we look at it. Congratulations to Megan on her election and also to Michelle on her retirement. Retirement is good. I hope you enjoy it.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders.
Yeah. Just like to echo what the other two commissioners have said. Congratulations to both of y'all, all three of you. And I'd like to thank the town for the job at Doughty Park and how nice it looks and all the events that have been going on. I think it's something that we can all be proud of. So, thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
If I may, there was one more thing I wanted to bring up.
Okay.
Under my agenda.
Of course.
I know we've already passed that.
That's fine. Proceed.
Okay. Just one second. So, this is something that came up at the board's retreat we had just a few weeks ago. And it's something that I mentioned to you. You know, we are always looking at our benefits that we offer our employees. You know, for the last few years, we've been looking at a sort of a total rewards approach for our employees to make sure that we are competitive and that we are sort of a leading employer in the region. And so, one of the things we discussed with the board at the retreat was our health insurance. You know, in 2010, we made a change to our health insurance for employees hired after 2010, whereas we were previously paying 75% of the premiums for an employee's spouse or child or family. After that date in 2010, we changed that to only 60% of the premiums for employees, not the employees, but their dependents. So, right now, we have about 30% of our workforce that's under the old system that are benefiting from the 75-25 split and about 75 or more employees that are under the new system. One of the things the board said at the retreat is we'd like to see some numbers to consider how we might put this back the way it was. And we also talked about other communities in the state and what they were offering. And the leading communities that we saw, including some of our neighbors here locally, were offering the 75% premium for employee dependents. So, Jan and Amy had put together some numbers. And for the annual cost of making this change to go back to a 75-25 split for all of our employees would cost us about $77,000 a year in budgetary numbers. Now, what we budget and what we actually spend are two different things because we have to be conservative when we budget. As we go through the year, we might find that we don't necessarily need to do a budget amendment in order to make this change. So, just want to make that note. You can see in the middle on the screen, we're paying about $1.6 million in premiums for... in the middle on the screen, we're paying about $1.6 million in premiums for employee health insurance and their dependents. So the increase would be about $77,000. So, in perspective, it's, it's not a large portion of, of what our costs are. Jan also modeled an 80-20 split. Would actually put us higher than most of the communities in the state, and the cost for that would be $116,000. The reason I'm bringing this up today, rather than waiting for the budget, the board expressed interest at the retreat on, on considering this. I didn't want to sit on this for another six months, knowing there was interest from the board to consider this. And it is a fairly simple change. The board could make, suggest a change today, and we could implement this for a January payroll. And that way, the employees wouldn't have to pay these extra premiums for the next six months. So, we've, we've put together some language for our personnel policy that would include language that, that specifies what our health insurance benefits are. And that, that is up on the screen now. This language indicates a 75-25 split. And obviously, if the board wanted to consider something other than that, we could just substitute those numbers. But I just wanted to bring this to you and, and have a discussion and see what you'd like to do.
Is this with or without a budget amendment?
It would not require that at this point in time.
For either option?
For either option. We would probably track how, how we're, our expenses for health insurance for the next few months. And if we need to bring forward a budget amendment, we would, we would at that time when we need to. But at this point, we don't expect we would have to do that the way we're tracking.
Okay. Board?
I would support the 75-25 split, and I'd almost be inclined to do the 80-20, especially seeing what our neighbors are doing. Not to one-up our neighbors, but to encourage our neighbors to do more for their employees as well.
Good. Thank you. Commissioner Sears?
I would echo that.
Okay. Mr. Brinkley?
This board has taken an aggressive approach for employee benefits. And not so much as one-upping, but it seems to be they always try to do that to us. Not one-upping. We don't care about that. We care about our employees. And I would fully support the 80-20 split for our employees and go ahead and do it now instead of during the budget.
Right. Thank you. Commissioner Sanders?
I'm fine with that. I, I kind of support the 80-20 as well.
And this would, Andy would have a significant impact on?
Yeah.
Their individual employees.
Just to entertain this real quick, I'll show you what that would do. And I'll take the most extreme example. But, right now, and this is every paycheck, if you have a family and you're under the 60-40 split, you're getting $288 taken out of your paycheck every two weeks to pay your health insurance for your family. And if we went to an 80-20, that would drop down to 144.
Yeah.
So that's a substantial expense for employees to incur.
For a paycheck.
For a paycheck.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. All right. Having heard that, are there other questions, or does somebody wish to make a motion? Or does this need a motion? Are you looking for?
I think it would be good to do a motion.
I think a motion would be in order for something like that. It does need a motion. Okay. All right, very good. Because it's a personnel policy change. So this would be a motion to amend the personnel policy, to change the insurance split from 60-40 to 80-20.
For all employees.
For all employees.
And, and that language is on the screen.
Right. Okay. All right. Motion and a second then. Any further discussion? Hearing none, then. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, we talk a lot about the housing issue, which is not, you know, not on the table, and, and is moving slowly. But one of the things that's been said is, we, we can pay our employees, everybody can pay your employees better and make it easier to live here. And I think the town in Nags Head's done a good job of that. This is another little step in the direction of, of compensation for employees that lets them, that lets them live here. All right. That brings us then to the mayor's agenda. And first, I have a couple of items I'm going to add, but the, one item here is consideration of the 2024 board meeting calendar, which was in your packet, along with the fiscal year 24-25 budget calendar, which was in the packet. And there's nothing surprising about the meeting calendar, the budget calendar. We appreciate the staff's move toward this direction to have this process start early, move in a really orderly fashion. It's been a big benefit to the board in our decision-making the last couple of years. So this just sets us up to continue that.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, thank you. Couple of other things. One, we need to stick around for a photo of the new board at the end of the meeting. So don't, don't escape after we return from our closed session. You may have seen that there was an article published last week that said that the Nags Head board had voted down an affordable housing proposal in January. I have written to the writer of that article to say that that was not accurate, that the board has taken other zoning actions, but the board never had a proposal in front of it for affordable housing. And I don't want the public to believe that we had such a proposal in front of us and voted it down. We absolutely did not. And so I just wanted you to know that I had reached out to that writer to, you know, and a clarification's not worth the paper it's printed on, but I wanted to make that clear. The other thing is, this is December, and one of the things the board has done in the past is to consider an employee Christmas bonus at this time for all of our employees. And that is at the rate of 75 and 150?
Yes, 150 for full-time employees, 75 for part-time.
Part-time employees. And if the board is so disposed, then a motion to approve a bonus would be in order.
So moved.
Have a motion as our second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. Then we are, before we go into closed session so that we come out of there clean, is there any other business to come before the board that anyone is aware of? All right, hearing none. Then we will, the board will move, I would move that the board go into closed session to consider closed session minutes from January to November 2023 pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A1, and also for the purpose of consulting with the town attorney regarding matters protected by attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, the board will be in closed session. All right. The board has returned to open session. Mr. Lighty, will you report for the closed session?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, the, the board did approve closed session minutes and authorized the opening of certain ones and the closure of others. Also took some other action, which does not need to be reported at this time.
Okay. All right, thank you. Having checked for other business before the closed session, then brings us to adjournment. And a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. And Merry Christmas to you all.
Merry Christmas to you all.
Christmas.